Good evening, everyone. The Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission Session, November the 12th, is now in order. Would you all please rise and receive the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. It appears all Commissions, with the exception of Mr. Ori, Mr. Bishop, are present. Staff introduction, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Cody Morton, Attorney for the Planning Commission.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Rhonda Bro, Engineering.
Bob Turner, Engineering.
Thank you. First item of business, can I get a motion for approval of the previous meeting, October the 14th?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
It has been motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda, affidavit mortgage declaration. Now, is there any reason why I can't, it appears we're reviewing the packet, there's no letter of objection from the bank. Is there any reason why I can't move and request a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving right along. Item 9A, family petition, Gordon Crawford property. Please step forward, state your name.
My name is Sean Thibodeau, I'm with Earls and Associates, on behalf of Mr. Crawford. Looking for approval on four pieces of property that are being created on Crawford Road.
Staff comments?
They've all been addressed.
Comments from Commissioners? At this time, open the floor for public hearing, any cards, anyone desires to speak. That being said, this time we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve.
I'll see. It has been motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 9B, Russell Ritchie property.
Sean Thibodeau, with Earls and Associates, here on behalf of Mr. Ritchie. Looking for approval on one piece of property.
Staff comments, please.
All the comments on the plat have been addressed. I think Cody, there's a question of ownership in a portion of the property?
Yes, just to let the Commission know, there is a boundary dispute, I think it's an a predatory action right now, there's a lawsuit pending, it's set for trial in February. The portion of the property that's subject to the lawsuit does not deal with what's being asked in a family partition, so we don't have any legal issues with moving forward with the approval of the family partition tonight.
That being said, it appears that we can move forward, what we need to do, prove or deny, is that correct?
That's correct.
Comments from Commissioners?
I have a couple. I want to officially ask Cody, I live in the subdivision that's part of this boundary dispute, although the subdivision itself is not involved, it's between property owners, am I supposed to recuse myself?
No, if you're not a petitioner or defendant in the lawsuit, then there's no reason that you have to abstain from voting.
Okay, thank you.
You may still recuse yourself if you wish, but there's no legal...
Okay. The other question I had was, I had heard a while back that there would have been multiple lots created, and now I just see one on the 73 side. If we approve this, the property owner cannot go through another family partition, is that correct?
He gets one family partition.
And this is it?
Once it's approved, that's it.
That's it, that's it. And the, his access, according to this staff, I'm sorry?
He can do one for each eligible family member, so he could come back later and create another one for his kids, for however many kids he has.
He can divide the same piece of property?
Off of the same piece, yes.
He can't come back with a separate piece?
He can do another one that he's going to put into his mother's name.
Can he do it on this piece of property?
His descendants and immediate family, is that correct?
Yes, as long as it's eligible family members, he can do it here. But then he can't give the same family members another piece anywhere else.
Okay. All right.
And as long as it meets the requirements of density and acreage.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments from Commissioners? This time floor is open for public hearing, any comments?
I'm sorry, I do have one more, I apologize, my fault. Should the property owner come back with additional family partition requests that exit into my subdivision, then we're going to have a different discussion. Because this property is supposed to exit out on 73, I mean 74, so I'm just letting you know, I'm still around.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing, any comments, anyone signed, please step up, state your name.
Brandon Becknell? Sorry, Brandon Becknell?
Yes.
Sir, I'm one of the adjacent landowners?
Yes.
And I am also the person that Mr. Ritchie has pending litigation with, that he's brought against the property. I never brought any suits against anything, he's the one that bought, brought the pending litigations. I forwarded all this to Ben Moran and asked him to forward everything to you and to Cody Morton, I don't know if you all got all that, but at this time, I would say that if you approve this now, you're just dragging yourself into litigation in February. You will be pulled into court in February. There's a lot of other concerns about coming back to re-subdivide different parts of it, which Mr. Burgess just asked the question, and obviously, it can be done. But in other words, access and the way the maps are and everything, my other concern is that with this map, that if you approve this, then he's going to be in court in February saying, well, the Planning Commission approved this. And we've already won a posessory hearing, not only did we win, but we also were awarded damages for Mr. Ritchie. This next deal is coming to court for predatory action in February. But everybody's got concerns about potential subdivision and then putting trailers there or whatever, and having to be granted access on land that's not his.
That concludes your comments?
So I'm saying, don't do it.
Legal, need your assistance, please. Viable, legal, recourse coming back?
Assistances, if you look at the plat map that was presented, there is an area on the map that identifies what's subject to a boundary dispute, what's actually being asked to partition out of this property is not a common boundary, we don't see any legal issues, you guys can move forward in approving or denying the family partition.
So would we approve it is the, is the partition itself, not the whole map? I mean, we're limiting our approval?
Well, the map acknowledges that there's a boundary dispute and there's a clause on it that says it. You're not approving, you're not giving anybody ownership of the land by approving the map.
Okay.
And you guys can put it on the record that, you know, you're approving it or not approving it, you know, with the knowledge that there is a pending litigation on the matter.
And for clarity's sake, the pending legal action is in the area that's marked on the map, encroachment area, see reference map?
Correct, this is a second.
On the north, I think it's the north side.
And the lot that we're talking about is Lot MD 1B, which is quite a distance, I don't know what the feet...
From the encroachment area.
From the encroachment area.
Correct.
I mean, I honestly don't see any reason to deny this with the stipulation that we're not making any judgment on the litigation surrounding the predatory action. All we'd be granting is the ability of the landowner to subdivide this one, or to family partition this one lot for his mother's house, which...
So we'll let you word the motion then.
And of course, this is another legal mine, so we thank you.
Thank you. Are we closed on the public hearing?
Well, obviously, Ms. Webb, this is documented, that legal has advised us that, thank you. Are there any other comments? No other comments? At this time, we close the floor for public hearing.
I will go ahead and move that we accept the family partition, subject to the stipulation that we are making no comment on the area that is subject to the predatory action, and we are not accepting the plat as a final plat of the, of the land, or the official plat of the plan, especially in the encroachment area, that being left to the jurisdiction of the court and the resolve of the predatory action pending in litigation, but that we're just simply approving the partition for Lot MD 1B for the purposes of building the landowner's mother's house.
And I'll second the motion.
It has been motion and second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I abstain.
One abstention.
One abstention. One, two, your vote?
Yes.
Yes?
I seconded the motion.
The motion passes by vote of three and one abstention.
Actually, is that, that's only three of seven Commissioners, does Jackie have to vote on this?
I don't have to, it's not a tie. I understand, I don't, there's no tiebreaker here, right? There's an abstention?
We don't have a majority of the Commissioners.
Majority of the quorum present, so.
Excuse me?
It's a majority of the quorum present, you're good to go.
Yes.
All right, I just want to clarify that.
Item 9C, Sarah S. Brock, Properties.
Good evening, my name is Derek Murphy of Quality Engineering and Surveying, representing the Brock family. We're asking for your approval tonight on a family partition, we've met all the comments and we agreed to the stipulation that everyone on Savoy Lane sign this plat, we ask tonight for your approval.
Has everybody on Savoy Lane signed the plat yet?
No, pending, pending this approval, they, they're all family, so.
Okay, so you want us to, your request is that we approve a contingent upon all owners on Savoy Lane signing the plat?
Correct.
Okay. Like a pre-dial agreement.
Staff comments, please?
No, sir, just the signatures are needed.
Any further comments from Commissioners? At this time, we open the floor for public hearing, anyone desires to speak, any cards signed? That being said, we close the floor for public hearing, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve it, subject to the owners of the road signing.
Second.
It is a motion and second, can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It appears that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I think it was you seconded, didn't you?
I made the motion.
He made the motion, I'll second.
Item 10A, Ascension Commerce Center, fifth phase, fifth and sixth phase.
This is a 345 acre, I'm sorry, Derek Murphy of Quality Engineering and Surveying again, this is a 345 acre industrial park off of Highway 30. These two phases will connect a, have a connector road connecting Highway 30 and Highway 73. We have outstanding comments with drainage and traffic on this particular project. We have been, we have several intermediate drainage studies, or a couple approved for off-site properties coming through this property, this is a very large piece of property. We have several phases already done, especially around Highway 30 and that kind of, around Highway 30 and on industrial road. The traffic study states that we will be putting in a right turn lane on Highway 30 into the project, a right turn lane and left turn lane out of the project on Highway 30, a left turn lane on Highway 73 into the project, a right turn lane on 73 into the project, a left turn and right turn out of the project on 73. The traffic study also states, and I got Nick Falito here with Neil Schaefer, also states that some traffic volume in Highway 30 and 73 intersection does increase at full buildout for this particular project. Even though it is failing today, and we give recommendations of what needs to happen at that intersection in its present state, that will fix both states. Go back to the drainage, we actually have a, like I said, probably about four drainage studies on this particular project, dealing with off-site properties coming through as properties get developed in this area, this is a very large industrial and commercial area with a lot of development happening right now. So we ask tonight for your approval. We also have stipulation from staff that we get a, an agreement from Energy, because they do have a 30-foot energy servitude where we're wanting to put our road, a letter of no objection from Energy saying that the public right-of-way, they would have no objection to where our location is. We only got that to staff today, so that was one of the stipulations offered. So we're here tonight to discuss this project and ask for your approval. So that's all I got.
Excuse me, staff?
As Derek stated, most of the concerns from the planning side of this were addressed. The outstanding issues at this time were the pole locations and that energy servitude, which I'm going to let Bob Turner address, and then the traffic and drainage studies, so I'm going to defer to them for more response.
And before Mr. Bob speaks, I just want to point out the ordinances and what you guys need to consider tonight. Under the code 4048 says, electrical and telephone facilities shall be located in servitudes. The issue we have here is the utility poles are located in the right-of-way. So what we do is we flip to 4049, it says, with the designated engineer review agency's recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall have the authority to waive or alter location or requirements where there is a conflict or where sound engineering practice would be subverted. Our designated engineering review agency is our in-house engineer, so Mr. Bob's going to address that to you guys.
Thank you.
The information that we have on the power poles is that there's a fairly limited number, three or four, that would be within the right-of-way. My only concern is that if they are encroached very far within the right-of-way, they could cause a problem on future maintenance of the open ditch. If we have a culvert that we have to excavate under the road, we may conflict with the power pole. The information we received from Energy is something that I expected, is that basically, that okay, it's not a problem with us, but if there's anything wrong with the poles or you have to do anything, you have to pay for them. Since we're going to be the owner of the road, I perceive that as being the parish would have to pay for relocating the pole. And I guess my feeling is that somehow the developer ought to be responsible for, if there's any relocating of the poles necessary. Other than that, I'm not opposed to the utility in the right-of-way. In fact, it's fairly common across the country for all utilities to be within a utility corridor, on, sometimes on the outer edge of the right-of-way, and in our case, in our codes, it's within a servitude adjacent to the right-of-way. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have on that.
Bob, where on the plat, or the poles we're talking, where are they located on the plat?
I think Derek's going to have to answer that, because all I got was just a few poles that were just limited into the right-of-way. I don't know exactly where they're at. My comments were general in nature that they would not, should not encroach more than three feet inside the right-of-way.
Derek, can you show us where they are?
They're actually, we have them surveyed in on some plans that, for the roadway plans, they're actually one to two feet inside the right-of-way, they don't encroach, most of them are actually almost straddling the right-of-way. We're, we're okay with saying that, you know, they can't be in that far. The developer doesn't have a problem, he's been dealing with energy for so long, we have already set precedence on the first two filings of this subdivision with the poles being in the right-of-way, they were existing at that time. We're basically straddling this right-of-way, which is what we, what we wanted to do, and keeping those poles within a foot or so of the right-of-way.
Now, we were told that, that we could make an exception if there was a sound engineering reason for the exception. So the fact is, the poles are already there, nobody wants to move them, is that the reason?
Yes, sir.
And also, just to clarify the statute, where there is a conflict or where there's sound engineering practice, so you have the authority based that there is a conflict.
Okay. And Bob, were you recommending that the developer be responsible for moving the pole, like immediately or in the future if required, or both?
Well, really neither. What I was doing was pointing out the fact that we assume responsibility for the maintenance of the pole, or the location of the pole in the future, the parish does. We should not have a problem, however, if we do have a problem, then the parish would be responsible for the relocation of the pole.
I'd like to point out, sorry, Mr. Bob, I'd like to point out that the developer's the one that's going to sign that agreement with Energy and not the parish.
Well, it said the owner, the agreement said the owner of the right-of-way. The parish would be the owner of the, of the right-of-way. Now, that's where if, you know, the developer can assume that responsibility and sign it, I have no objection at all.
How much of a deal is it to move a pole, in terms of money?
It can be rather expensive, depending on the size of the pole.
These are about $10,000 apiece.
Yeah, $10,000 is a very common figure.
I'd like to also, I'd like to also point out that it is pretty typical, I know it's a light standard or street light within the right-of-way, it's pretty typical in any type of subdivision that y'all approve up here, so it's not unheard of for utilities to be within the right-of-way. But I understand what, I understand what Mr. Bob is saying, I agree, I agree with it. Our intent is not that, we've been having, basically this road base has been in place for some time, this has been part of a development plan ongoing for years, and so that's why, why it's the reluctance to move over even a little bit, because this road base is in great shape. It's a, it's already predefined, and they've been utilizing it in some capacity for hauling dirt, doing some industrial activities, and so it's a very nice road base. To move it over several feet would basically jeopardize what we already, what the developer and owner's already put in place.
With all that confidence, then you probably feel okay about guaranteeing that y'all move the poles if required by the parish?
Well, probably by Energy or the parish, I guess.
That you'd pay for it.
Staff, would you state under what condition, contingency that you would approve? To be clear for the record.
Yes, I would approve the poles being within the right-of-way if it's no more than, each pole, no more than three feet within the right-of-way. And it's my understanding that the poles are not more than three feet, so they would be acceptable for my approval. My only concern is the maintenance of the pole. The agreement states that the owner shall be responsible for moving the pole if it becomes necessary. And in my opinion, since the parish will assume the ownership of the road, we become the owner responsible for moving the pole. That's my only concern. It's likely it will not happen. Derek's right, very common for utilities, especially power poles, to be within the right-of-way, that's not at all uncommon, but generally, they're there with our permission. In other words, if, if a utility pole goes inside the parish right-of-way, they go there with our permission, with the understanding that if we have to widen the road or move the pole, have the pole moved, they are responsible for moving the pole, because they're on our right-of-way. This is just the reverse, they're on, we're on their easement now. And so if the pole needs to be moved, it would be our responsibility. Is that, I hope I haven't confused that.
I think we got the gist of the first part, which is the contingency.
Well, Bob, what circumstances would require the pole to be moved? If, if it's required for maintenance of the ditch, is that what we're talking about?
I apologize.
Under what circumstances would we, would the pole be required to be moved?
It would be required to be removed if we should want to widen the road in the future, if the road is of a certain width now and we need to widen it, another lane, for example, very unlikely that would happen, but if that happens, we'd have to move the pole. The other option is that if, for drainage purposes, we have to place a brand-new culvert across the road in the area right where the pole is, we might have to move the pole outside of the area of the culvert. That's the only two conditions that I see as possible, both of them very unlikely.
It sounds like unlikely ifs.
Yeah, but possible.
If I may, this may clarify, actually, we got, and I'm sorry about this, we just got this at 4:45 this evening from Energy, which has removed a lot of that language about paying, because the developer went back to them and basically said, they changed that to say, an owner agrees to coordinate any work that could damage or undermine the existing Energy Louisiana LLC facilities located within the existing 30-foot right-of-way associated with the above referenced project. So they took out the part of payment and maintenance. So I remember getting that this afternoon, so they did take, they did revise some of that language, that we would, I would need to get to Cody and let him, let him review.
That contingency still?
That, that pretty well resolves my concern, it came down to really who had to pay, and it's obvious that coordination with Energy, if that should occur, would take place.
Can we, can we approve a contingent upon that, that letter being submitted in with the packet that was submitted for approval?
Yeah.
Then that's the new contingency, then?
Yes.
Well, we need to hear from Rhonda still. Yeah.
Bob's going to handle traffic, but I can talk about drainage. As Derek said, we have seen this very project several times before I've started here, in different phases it has been approved. However, this particular one that I've gotten in, there were numerous comments, and we have not gotten response back. I sent my comments out last week, and I haven't gotten comments back in, but some of the larger comments were that this is a 2015 package, and a lot of the data was from 2013. They have not updated their drainage information to include 25-year storm, that's something that's new to ordinances. Their preliminary plat didn't match the area that they were talking about in the drainage. I mean, there were, there were some pretty major comments. And another one is their watershed area, our, our drainage expert in the parish disagrees with their drainage area, their watershed area. So that's a, some big conflicts that, for that reason, I don't feel comfortable recommending approval until we work that out. And that's for drainage.
Related to traffic, there are three intersections that are affected by this development. One of them is a existing entrance that accesses Highway 30, from Industrial Drive to Highway 30. Then there is the intersect, existing intersection of Highway 73 and Highway 30, that's an existing intersection that is on the corner of this property. Then we have another entrance being proposed, it does not exist today, but it's being proposed to have Industrial Drive connect to Highway 73. That's the one that Derek talked to you about, that said their proposal will have a, a left turn on 73 into Industrial Drive, and it'll have a right turn from Industrial, 73, also into Industrial Drive, and then it will have a right turn lane and a left turn lane out of Industrial Drive onto Highway 73. My concern is that that intersection does not exist today. However, when they make that connection with the improvements that they're proposing, the intersection is level of Service F. It's going to fail before we even have it. And the reason being is that there is a significant volume of traffic, both on 73 and... And the reason being is that there is a significant volume of traffic, both on 73 and on Industrial Drive. This, this development will create about 5,000 vehicles a day. 73 currently has about 12,000 vehicles a day. So, now, not all the 5,000 will come out onto 73. Part of them will come out on Highway 30. But Highway 30 has about 13,000 cars a day. So, you see that we're talking about significant numbers, volumes of traffic. The proposed improvements for Industrial Drive onto Highway 30 that Derek stipulated to are fine. That's, that intersection is okay. We, I have no objection against that intersection. It functions at a reasonable level of service. The two concerns that I have is, one, the new connection to 73, which functions at a level of service F, and the existing intersection of 73 and 30. It currently is a level of service F. It fails both in the AM and the PM peaks. Tremendous amount of traffic goes through it. It, they add to it, but they add a little bit. I mean, it's not their fault that that intersection fails, but they add to the issue. And so, that, that bothers me because I think that a development should not add to the problem. They, they can't correct the problem. I acknowledge that. But they shouldn't add to it or they should propose an improvement that eliminates their increase in traffic. If it's a level of service C, say for example, then when their improvement's over, they ought to be still at a level of service C. But in this case, it's a level of service F and they're going to add to that a little bit. So, that's, that's where I, I'm having trouble. And as a result of that, I can't approve the traffic based on what I've got. Now, and Derek's, I want to be clear that today, this morning, I received a new traffic impact study from Derek. I have not had an opportunity to look at that. It's going to take me three to four days. I mean, it's that thick. So, it's going to take me three to four days to evaluate whether or not they've made significant improvements that I can confidently tell you that I have no problems with it. But right now, I, I can't say that.
So, at this time, it doesn't look like you would have a contingency, contingency to recommend. So, there won't be an approval from you. And I guess you, Rhonda, you would have a drainage impact study approving that kind of, those two things. It looks like staff, we can't make a recommendation for approval. Is that correct?
I can't make a recommendation for approval of traffic at this point.
Yeah, because you don't have, Rhonda?
I can't make a recommendation at this point. The comments are too significant.
That's, that's clear. Any further discussion from commissioners?
Well, I just wanted to ask Bob a question. If that is, if your analysis says that exit 1 to 73 is a level of service F, what improvements can they make to, to change that from an F? Because it, it's an F because of the traffic already on Highway 73.
Yes, I, I think maybe Nick would be the best one. This is a, a significant traffic engineering problem and a situation. And there may be options and I think Nick would be better to address those than I would.
Bob, if all, well, one other question. If all the traffic from the development exited onto Highway 30, what would happen to that?
I think that intersection would fail. You'd have all 5,000 cars coming out.
Right now, you're seeing it so.
Coming out on a road that had 12,000 vehicles. So, you'd have.
But you said, you said a minute ago that because some of it's going out to 30.
Yeah.
That looks okay?
And that intersection's fine. There's, as it's currently proposed, that intersection is fine. However, when you go to the second phase and develop the remainder of the property and you access 73, the 73 intersection then would fail.
And are you assuming a certain percentage of the traffic from the development goes out to 73? A certain percentage to 30?
The, it's spelled out in the traffic engineering study and Nick can address that. But there is a legitimate breakdown of traffic that might go to 73 and it might go to 30.
Okay.
And those are the figures that were used to evaluate whether or not the intersection was satisfactory at a level of service.
Okay.
I'm just to add what Bob was saying for the Nick Felito at Neil Schaefer. The intersection, the future intersection on 73 with Industrial Drive. So, this is kind of the, when you intersect a state route, we always get in this situation where, you know, things that could improve that unsignalized intersection delay would be to add a traffic signal. But with the OTD's policy and the way they deal with traffic signals, in order to get that traffic signal, that traffic demand needs to be there. But we know that demand will not be there at day one. It may not be there three years after that phase is built. You know, it's, it's kind of one of those things, the, the cart before the horse. They're not going to approve a traffic signal initially. They're going to want to wait and see until those volumes are there to warrant that signal. So, you know, in the future, if that delay does materialize, then a traffic signal would be an option to, to reduce that delay, that location. To kind of expand on what Bob said about the traffic study they received this morning, the revised study that we had done was, one of the comments was that there were eight additional lots that were approved previously that they wanted to see included in the study. That is a majority of what that revised study is. Those eight additional lots were included in the, the fifth and sixth filings, which generated an additional, I think it was additional 80 trips. But in general, it did not change our original recommendations or analysis from the original study. I would like to touch on the intersection at LA 30 and 73. In our study, we do recognize that that is a, a problem intersection. And we did evaluate potential improvements that could be implemented at that intersection to alleviate the existing conditions today. We looked at two scenarios. One, to add right turn lanes on three of the approaches. One approach already has a right turn lane and all approaches currently have left turn lanes. And then we also looked at a different alternative, which would be a roundabout. Both of those scenarios do show some benefit to improving the delays at that location. So, you know, we, it's not like we turned a blind eye on that intersection and said, you know, there's no impact. We did recognize there's issues there and, and did propose or show some improvements that could be implemented at that location.
Does, does that intersection at 73 and 30 affect the rating of the, of the new intersection at Industrial Drive and 73?
Well, the traffic that's generated by the development affects both the 30 and 73 intersection to a certain extent. It's not much, but it affects it some. It has the greater effect at 73 and, and Industrial Drive.
I guess what I'm asking, Bob, is if you, if you put a roundabout, for instance, at 30 and 73, does that, does that improve the intersection, the new intersection at Industrial Drive and 73?
If you put a roundabout at the intersection of 73 and 30, it would go from an F to an A.
What about, what about?
Major increase, major benefit.
I get that. And what about, how does that improvement affect the intersection at Industrial Drive and 73?
I don't think it would have an effect on it.
It'd still be an F?
I think it'd still be an F because you, we made no additional improvements at that intersection for, for the difficulty of the turns. Now, they're, they're adding significant turning lanes, a southbound left from 73 into that and a right turn out and a left turn out. So, they're adding a number of lanes there, but still yet, it's an F. So, that traffic is not going to go away, nor is that traffic going to be diminished because if we can make the Highway 30 and 73 intersection work, great. So, it, it would still be a factor.
Now, the, the intersection of LA 73 and Industrial Drive, the delays are experienced by the folks trying to leave Industrial Drive. The LA 73, you know, that's still flowing. It's free flow. It's just a lot of volume. Bob said, you know, it's 12, 13,000 ADT on 73. So, without any type of traffic control, there's just not a lot of gaps there for those people to make a right or left turn.
And you looked at something, things like a center turning lane or, or something like that or?
Well, we, we've, we've recommended a left turn lane on 73 to make the left into Industrial Drive.
So, the delays on 73 going into the subdivision is mitigated. It's coming out of this, of this subdivision that's going to cause issues, those that are inside. We understand this, but it's mainly because of volumes on 73. So, there's nothing to mitigate that except a signal. The OTD is not going to let us have a signal until they evaluate the intersection at some future time.
What about something like a right turn only out of Industrial Drive and a J-turn on 73?
Well, even if you do a J-turn, I mean, you're probably looking into right of way, additional right of way takings.
Well, I don't know about that, but I just wanted to, in your experience, would that help that situation?
Well, the J-turn would likely have to be signalized in order for, for it to operate properly as well.
But if it was just a right turn, coming out and you can't go left on the 73, does that solve anything?
That's part of the problem, going, trying to go left on Industrial.
And that's why we recommended two exit lanes so that anybody that coming out wanted to make a right on 73, they wouldn't be delayed by anybody making the left turn. Now, if people are having difficulty making that left turn, they can always go out to LA 30, make a right turn on 30 and go through the intersection that way.
So, I'm asking if we forced it to do that so that nobody ever turns left? Because what's going to happen is when they try to turn left, we're going to have state police there for the accidents.
Let me, let me add something. If we force the traffic off of the 73 Industrial Drive and force it over to the 30, Highway 30 Industrial Drive, all of a sudden, that intersection's going to be a problem. Right now, it's okay.
How close is Highway 30 to downgrading at that intersection? I mean, how much more you, because you said you're, we're estimating 5,000 cars coming out of there, some portion of which, if it has two driveways, will go to Highway 30, which you said is fine. They can't take all of the Highway 30. So, how much, how much do you estimate they could take of that 5,000 to leave 30 as it is now?
Nick will have to answer that, but I believe it's like 30%.
I don't, I don't have those numbers. It's the.
Well, Bob, you, you know how that's going to work anyway. People are going to go from there. They're going to figure out what's the best way to go.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, it's going to, if that turns out to, to be a failed intersection, meaning it's very difficult to get out of there, they're going to go the other way. And I understand that. Experiment with that.
I will add, if they do go to LA 30, they would be making a right turn lane, a right turn movement on LA 30, which is easier to make. You're only looking in one direction, looking for one gap, which would be an easier movement for them.
Especially if you put in a right turn lane on 30 out of there that took you all the way to the intersection.
We make it easy to get onto 30, you're going to affect the Highway 30, 73 intersection. I mean, there's no free ride anywhere. It's, it's, you've got three intersections and you have to balance them. And so, when you take away from one, you're adding to the complexities of the other two.
So, guys, I guess I'd ask you, we heard concerns from, on both traffic and drainage. What's the, what, what's the solution?
Well, on traffic, we're sitting here in another meeting. I think we're going to have the same conversation because looking at this, this developer's going to be putting in close to, he's going to mitigate his impact at his location, looking at some like $650,000 in some kind of traffic improvements in this area. 30 and 73, it is an issue today. We all agree with that. No one says it isn't. Putting in right turn lanes or putting in a, a roundabout? Any idea of the estimated cost and?
Roundabout would be expensive. I mean, you're probably four million. That's depending on if you have to do right of way taking and whatnot.
And for a project or for an intersection that's already at level F, we're going to continue to be at level F. It does increase the volumes 10%.
It's about 11% when we add those additional eight lots.
So, I guess what I'm saying is in traffic, we're mitigating at our intersections. We're not mitigating 30 and 73.
What about drainage?
What's that?
What about drainage?
Drainage, that's the point of contention. We've actually turned in three previous studies and Rhonda, you know, we've had, we've been turning in because of the properties around and what's going on. The watershed comment, those watersheds have been approved prior to. And Rhonda is right, we haven't returned those comments to her on all of that. The 10-year versus 25, we were going to provide that. However, there's a conversation about because previous, this property, even though we're submitting here, it has previous approvals on drainage studies for the 10 years. So, there was some conversation at some point about grandfathering in to detain this 10-year, but we would look at the 25 and that's something that, that we would do.
Can you, can you address that? Are they bounded at 10-year or the 25-year?
I'd have to go look and see when everything was passed and when they were. I can't, I can't answer that right now without seeing the documents and reading the ordinances on it.
Do I feel that we can work through the, the drainage portion of those comments? Absolutely, I do. I mean, so, and if we hear again, if we, if we get pushed back or asked to push back, I think in 30 days, we're going to be sitting right here saying, yes, we, we worked through the things in the 30 days just like we will do if we get past what contingent upon tonight. As far as the traffic is concerned, I mean, our study is there. We do show, like I said, we do show the problem. I know I keep coming back to traffic, but drainage, drainage, I feel that we can work out. And we, we've got plans in place. We've got agreements with all-site neighbors. We're putting in a lot of culverts through our site. We're putting in a regional type detention pond. Another, same kind of thing. We didn't want to have our neighbors with small ponds around them as well. So, we worked out deals with several large tracts of property adjacent to us in order to allow their drainage to come through us. And that's what the original studies were for, is, is doing some larger ponds, doing some more improvements under this road base that is here, increasing the 48 inches pipes that are already existent, increasing those, rerouting those to the larger ponds that are actually existent today. They need to be improved at some point as we go through the phases. And so, do I feel that drainage is going to be taken care of? Yes, I do. I think we can work through it. We've already got some approvals on what we want them to do. And the concept hasn't changed. The concept is the same. So, just coming back to drainage, I think we can work that out.
Ricky, if we say no, what happens?
If you straight out deny, then they would appeal your decision to the appeals board and it would go with this exact same amount of information. They wouldn't be allowed to submit anything new to the appeals board. And the appeals board would decide whether or not you guys made a good decision or not and either overturn your decision or stick with your decision. If, if they uphold your decision, then I'm assuming 30 or 60 days later, they'd resubmit and come back to you guys and hopefully have it all worked out. You know, a denial for a preliminary plat isn't like a zoning denial where they got to wait a year. It's just, it's another hurdle they got to jump over. If, if it's looking like a denial, they can request a postponement until the next meeting to come back and, and have it re-looked at.
No, it sounds like there are too many, too many outstanding issues to be resolved. Wanted to make one of the comment about traffic. When we look at drainage, we, we require that there's, that, that what's, what remains after the development is, does not create any further problem than, than before the development. And we, and we look at, we should look at traffic the same way. Is this going to, how do you decide if it fails a failed intersection? If this, if that intersection were a C, would it make it an F? I'm not sure, Bob, that you were able to answer that question. You felt, because if I'm not mistaken, you said that this is going to add some incremental traffic to a failed intersection.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Well, it's not their fault the intersections fail.
No, it's, it's not. It's not their fault that the intersections fail.
So, I'm not sure that, I guess the question is, are they, is the incremental, are they, if they, as, as, as you suggested, you've mitigated, your, your plan is to mitigate the traffic that comes out of this, this development in terms of a traffic.
Correct.
You can't improve and you're not required, we're not requiring you to improve the intersections that are already existing and already at sea level or failed or whatever. Now, if we had impact fees, that money collected from this development would certainly help, you know, mitigate some, some other affected areas, maybe as far down as the interstate where we need a couple of roundabouts over on 30 near the interstate already. So, Ricky, you had a comment?
I just want to read from the current adopted traffic impact analysis policy. So, whenever a, a study is submitted to us, this is the current policy by which we, we act. A proposed development which is found to overburden the existing transportation network or cause a reduction in service of affected roadways below an acceptable level of service may require the owner-developer at the agreement of the ERA and DPW to modify the development proposal to minimize the identified traffic-related impacts. Modifications to applications for projects may include, but shall not be limited to, a reduction in the projected vehicle trips per day, dedication of additional right-of-way for future roadway improvements, rerouting of traffic in proposed access points serving the proposed project, or participation in funding transportation facilities including signals, roadway, and intersection improvements." There are four options if they're overburdening a system.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to... They weren't, they weren't, that wasn't an exclusive list, was it?
Shall be, not be limited to.
And I heard a lot of maize in there.
But, by, by no means is this, you know, written in absolute stone and cannot change. I'm saying that if he comes back in thirty days and the traffic study still says FFF, are there any other options? "Participation in funding transportation facilities including signals, roadway, and intersection improvements." If they offer to participate in funding other off-site improvements to offset the burden that they're causing on those intersections, that's something to consider.
Yeah, and I, that's good, but I'm trying to get, I'm trying to understand whether we're saying they're overburdening existing intersections or not. Are we saying that or not?
Well, didn't the study say eleven percent, it would increase the, the traffic eleven percent at that intersection?
The volume, yes sir.
Volume?
The volume, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's, it, it increases it that much.
Ricky, what, what, what's this, that's the ordinance number that you were reading from?
This isn't ordinance, this is a policy that was approved by the commission on September tenth of two thousand and three. This is how all traffic studies are performed and submitted to the parish.
Okay.
But, I didn't hear in there, and I was trying to pick it out, I didn't hear that it shall require traffic improvements, as we may require them to do improvements in the first paragraph.
Right, you also don't have to approve it.
Well, there's the thing, I, I, Derek, I, I mean, I would, I think you may wanna consider withdrawing this and resolving the issues that are, that are outstanding.
I'll humbly ask the commission to defer this for thirty days.
Why is this?
I think that's...
Smart man.
Why is this decision, I was gonna ask that.
Do we have to move to accept that?
Can we get a motion?
I'll send one.
Second.
Oh, that we're gonna table this, or it's withdrawn?
The item, well, it's withdrawn, it'll be moved to the next session.
I think y'all have to vote on the, allow the defer of...
There's a motion to move the item on the discussion now to the next session. Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
It has been motion and second. All in favor of the motion to move this item to the next session?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? The motion to move this item to the next session passes unanimously. Next item, ten C, Cedar Springs.
Good to see you again, Derek.
Please bear with me. My name is Derek Murphy, Quality Engineer and Surveying, representing the, representing America Homeland for Cedar Springs off of Norwood Road. Uh, this project is a little over thirteen acres, and we're asking for approval on a, a standard subdivision with thirty-nine lots. Uh, this area, uh, we do have a traffic approval, traffic analysis approval. We also, uh, uh, we understand that this area is susceptible to, to flooding in this area. We talked to several homeowners, and plus we looked at the drainage and the, uh, areas around here. We've been working with Rhonda on the comments she had. We feel, uh, we feel very good about that we can, we spent several hours this week working on it, and we feel that, uh, I feel, I might just put words in her mouth, that the drainage study is gonna be fine. Right now, on this piece of property, twenty-three off-site acres comes through this piece of property and puddles up near, in the middle of this. What we're planning on doing is all, putting some off-site, uh, put some onsite ditches, routing it. There is actually, uh, Norwood Lakes, which is, uh, just to the east of us, has a pretty large drainage area that drains to the east, drains into a tributary of Henderson Bayou and ties into Henderson Bayou, one point eight miles north of here. Uh, we're gonna be, uh, basically bypassing water right into that ditch and getting, uh, just collecting all the water in the area. I think one of the planning items was about a secondary entrance. Um, we feel that with thirty-nine lots and only having, uh, only having frontage on Norwood and having a two roads within three hundred feet of each other is, is, and, you know, it's basically, you want two entrances in case you have emergency, that kind of stuff. Connections three hundred feet from each other, uh, you don't have that ability. In other words, if you have an emergency on one entrance, a lot of times it's gonna be affecting both. We also feel that, uh, one entrance, this commission has set a precedence with one entrance for a lot more lots than this, and we'd like to keep a single entrance off of Norwood. We've answered, uh, most of the, I think, the planning comments. We have our traffic approval, and we feel very, very confident that we're not gonna have any issues with the drainage study. We ask tonight for approval contingent upon the drainage study, uh, approval.
Staff?
As far as planning comments, yeah, the, the second entrance that we, that we would like to see, they gave us their response back. That's just gonna be up to you guys, y'all's call, whether you're required or not. Uh, anything traffic or drainage, Bob and Rhonda can answer. But I do have, yeah, the letter from Bob approving the traffic impact study was included in y'all's packet, so.
Further comments from staff, commissioners?
Wait, we, we should hear from Rhonda.
There were eighteen comments on this, which is, um, a, a lot, but, um, they have, Quality has met with me this week. I think we can work through them, they aren't quite as big as others. I think these can be worked through. So if you approve it, please do a contingent upon the drainage impact study.
Commissioners? Waiting to speak. This time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. Step up to the podium, state your name, please.
My name is Sherry Cannon, and that ditch you was talking about goes from behind that property. Part is my property, it is growing up in trees, and Norwood Lake was supposed to put a wooden fence around the thing, and it has been laying on the ground since the last hurricane ten years ago. They have never fixed it. So what's the good part of having a ditch if it's growed up in trees higher than your head? If they were to improve of it, if they're fix it up, it's all right. But the fence has been down from Norwood Lake, I know this is not the same subject, but the fence was put up to keep the, uh, people from the subdivision from coming on to somebody else's property, and the kids keep coming through. And like I say, the fence has been down since the last hurricane.
Ma'am, where is, where is that on the plot, plat?
What plat?
I'm sorry, bed, where, where are we?
What?
What they asking, this is Norwood Lakes here? Drainage servitude back here?
All right, they got, they got the connect, the little ditch they drove to go to, uh, a pond, I guess, back there.
Yes ma'am, the pond's here.
Okay, but, the, the ditch is growed up with trees, they have never cut them down. The fence is gone, part of the fence is gone. But that has nothing to do with your property, though.
No ma'am, it doesn't.
But, but they're not...
Any further comments?
So whose ditch is it?
Staff, good question.
Derek.
That is a public drainage servitude, it's, we have a forty-foot public drainage servitude on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of Norwood Lakes, and a fifty-five-foot drainage servitude to the south side of Norwood Lakes.
Who's responsibility for maintenance?
If it's, if it's a public drainage servitude, then the drainage department would be responsible, and, um, they would have to put in that request. If it's a fence between adjoining residential users, we don't require that there be a fence. It's not like there's an ordinance that requires a fence between a subdivision and a rural lot. Um, so if that fence fell down, once again, I would venture a guess that there's no HOA at Norwood Lakes, there's nobody that's gonna enforce that, and so the fence probably just laid there for, I don't know which hurricane, five years, six years, seven years, probably been down a while.
But it's not responsible to the developer, his client, is that correct?
Not this developer, no sir, that's Norwood Lakes, that's pre-two thousand and eight.
Or the project.
Yes, and, and these, these drainage servitudes were put in to collect water from this area. Like I said, there's, there's twenty-three acres off-site of us, plus our thirteen acres, and we all flow. I think there's actually close to twenty-eight acres flowing into this ditch. So it's a public ditch that accepts, uh, water from several properties in this area.
So Derek, while you're there, Batco couldn't kinda like meander over there for a while and clean some of that up? I'm sure the parish wouldn't mind.
I, I'm sure they wouldn't, but I'm not gonna commit to that.
I understand, I'm just, you know, as a thought.
I got you.
You know, Batcos have been known to get lost and improve drainage.
Uh, any further comments? Public hearing is still open, anyone else desires to speak? No cards? No further comments from commissioners? At this time, we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion? I'll move to approve, subject to the drainage, um, issues being worked out. Those are the contingencies.
My second.
It's been motion and second, time to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Ten C, Maple Grove.
What's your name?
Again, Derek Murphy, Quality Engineer and Surveying.
Who's your mom in them?
We don't, we don't, I don't think we have a frequent appearance program.
No sir. Uh, I'm here tonight to, uh, ask for your approval on Maple Grove subdivision, representing Ascension Properties. This piece of property has, we've looked at this thing quite some time. Uh, I will tell you, we've had layouts upwards of a hundred and fifty lots on here, and, uh, looking at, that, that does meet code, by the way. However, looking at, at the residents in this area, looking at the elevations in here, uh, the developer came back and said, we want some large lots in Santa Moll. And what we're, what we did was, we asked for some waivers on this one for an open ditch, private road, to allow larger lots. And we have a one-hundred-foot minimum frontage with a minimum one-acre lot size, and lot, and lots go up to almost twelve acres here. We're obviously not gonna come in here and fill everything, we're gonna fill home pads, plus work, these are gonna be custom-type homes. We're asking tonight for your approval of Maple Grove. We understand that this area is low, and we want to be, uh, we want to be, uh, good neighbors in that, in that fact, and not come in and fill up the entire place. So we actually are limiting, uh, we have, in our drainage study, when talking to Rhonda, is just limiting the amount of impervious area we're gonna put in here, and, and talking about home sites versus filling these areas up. So we're asking tonight for your approval contingent upon the drainage study being approved.
Staff, please.
Yes, at this time, all comments have been addressed. I do have the letters, uh, I haven't yet got the original from Bill Rue, but we do have the letter from myself, uh, the DPW director and the drainage director granting the, the variance request for doing an open ditch street in the subdivision, which is something we required in code, because today it's not allowed. Uh, but with the special circumstance and the criteria that we're, we're putting on this subdivision, uh, minimum of one-acre lots, minimum of a hundred-foot of frontage, minimum of a four-foot improved shoulder on the road, you must be served by a community sewer, and you must adhere to all the other major subdivision design guidelines, meaning sidewalks, the trees, and the park space. Um, we feel like with, meeting all that criteria, that we think that the variance is, uh, is okay.
Can we, uh, also require that no family partitions come from this?
So, we've added several notes to the plat. The first is, no further subdivision of any lot within the Maple Grove subdivision shall be allowed. The, the, one of the things Derek failed to mention is that when they took this project to DOTD, they said anything more than seventeen lots is gonna require a turn lane on Highway four thirty-one. So, we're noting the plat that no family partition, no further subdivision shall be allowed. Secondly, we're saying no enclosure of any roadside ditch. The ditch is being designed as part of the drainage plan. It's being, uh, another condition is a four-to-one slope. So, uh, Joe Santa Moll on his lawnmower can mow that ditch, and the parish is not gonna be out there mowing it, A, it's a private road, but at four-to-one slope, it's a mowable swale. And third, it says, um, no enclosure of the road ditch shall be allowed unless the private road shall never be accepted until the parish, into the parish maintenance system, until such time that has been constructed with a curb and gutter and subsurface drainage system according to the latest set of approved construction specifications or subdivision regulations. If this neighborhood comes together and says, we want our road to be public, they're gonna curb and gutter that street, they're gonna enclose that ditch into culverts, and then we'll consider accepting it into the parish maintenance system. So all those notes are put onto the plat now.
Are there no driveway culverts either?
There will be driveway culverts, but they're limited, and I, I forget what we're, what we said, twenty-four feet or something. But the way they're gonna be designed is, he's gonna go down at a gradual, and he's gonna do, did he say a box with a grate?
It's basically not a culvert per se, but an opening on each driveway. So it's not an actual culvert, basically, where, um, it's a special design that we're gonna be doing for the subdivision.
Sounds good.
Any further staff comments? Derek, the existing pond there, that cuts through, looks like, uh, four lots, but a major part of three. Is that, what's, is that pond gonna remain?
That pond is gonna remain, and we're putting a drainage servitude around that pond, so that they can't come in and modify it.
How big are the lots without the, without the pond running through it?
You look, you look in there, those lots, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are all acre and a half. So outside of that, I can't tell you exactly, but they're, you know, they're almost an acre, I would think.
So they're...
That's why twelve you see as a lot wider than thirteen, it's because we want to maintain a, a, a minimum type area.
So you're still gonna meet the acre requirement that the planning staff desires, even though those ponds are taking up most of the, you're gonna have an acre worth of land to build on?
I'm not gonna sit here and say we meet exactly an acre outside of that, 'cause I'm not sure. But I do know that these lots are one point six acres, one point nine four acres, and one point four seven acres, with the ponds included, so they are larger than the minimum one-acre lot.
And what, what's Lot Eight, is that always gonna be one giant lot?
Yes sir, it's eight point five eight acres. And as a Lot Seven, that's, that's twelve acres underneath it.
Any further comments from staff, commissioners? That being said, at this time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. Anyone desires to speak, step up to the podium, state your name.
I'm doing Mark Bruce out. I live just south of this proposed subdivision. Uh, Matt, to answer some of your questions, on the...
Time.
West side of Lot Eleven, they showing it at four hundred and forty-one feet, to the water is three hundred and eight. The next line, they showing it at four hundred and seventy feet, it's a hundred and sixty-one. You do the math on a hundred and fifty-four by three oh eight by, uh, one sixty-one, it ain't nowhere close to an acre. Lot Twelve, the same way, Lot Thirteen, the same way. Now, we're going on to where I'm in that, with the new, the new pond, what kind of ordinances does the parish have on how close that pond can be to our properties? 'Cause I don't think they got but about ten foot here. And I, I don't know how that works. And when that ten-foot lifts off into that pond, it's gonna be on me. So I got, then the water right now comes across, we did have a little discussion, he said he's gonna eventually have a culvert going to this white open now on their said property, not on me, which, that's good, but wherever they're gonna do that... on their said property, not on me, which, that's good. But wherever they're gonna do that at, we worry about erosion, 'cause we got the white oak canal in our backyard eroded now. And I'm just concerned on what, how close is that? The existing pond is about 20 foot onto property that they don't own. But if you go look at where their property markers are, now they're 10 foot away from that hole. So if you go look at it, you think you own land on the other side of that pond, and it's not. On that other up. I went and looked at all this yesterday. So I just would like to know, on the width of that area from property line to a pond, how much room do they have to leave?
Staff?
So there's not a real ordinance for where you can dig a hole. I would imagine that based on how these ponds typically get designed, that there's some berming that's gonna occur to contain the water before the hole starts. Again, there's no real ordinance for where that berm can start and stop. The fill ordinance that we've got in place is more about the toe of a slope underneath a structure. So when they get in and start designing the proposed pond, if there's ever an issue between you guys and what this developer's doing, I always defer to the civil matter, but at this point, I think he's hearing the concern and perhaps could push that pond up to get it maybe 20 feet away from the water surface.
And I don't know what it's really measured. I mean, it's 'cause it's not drawn. I'm estimating, that ain't but about 10 foot. But then again, in their eyes, 470 feet, and it's only 161. So I'm kinda concerned with that footage.
Assuming you have a response.
Well, as far as the markers, you just told me about that this afternoon on the property corners. Obviously, we can go out there and look at it. I don't know if that's on the offset of what we did. We actually went out there and surveyed some of it, just started some surveying. So, yes, sir, I understand what you talked about. So we're not trying to take, obviously, we're not trying to take property that isn't ours, for sure. So if it's inside, you know, if the property's inside the pond, they went out there and staked something, they would put it on an offset. And like you said, the stake didn't say offset. We'll check into that. As far as how close the pond could be to the property line, we'll tell you, typically, it's around 10 feet. In this case, I'll have to talk to the developer, see if he's willing to go further than that. We're not gonna, we can't slough off. We can't affect our neighbors. We do put erosion control on these banks to ensure that we don't have slough. Same thing I told him about the outfall for the pond. We're gonna put erosion control where we're tying into any ditches or anything like that. Mr. Bob's not gonna let us get away without it. They review all of this, of course. And so we're gonna make sure we have any type of erosion control in place adequate enough to ensure that erosion's not gonna happen, or any sloughing's not gonna happen. But we'll talk to the developer before we get working on the design and talk to him about your concerns.
Any further comments? Anyone else desires to speak?
I do. If I can speak.
Yes, please, staff.
What type of, Derek, what type of erosion control are you planning to put on the banks? I know you put that on the outlets, but are you just talking about seeding or something more?
We always, we usually do something like that Flex Terra that we always put in, which is a high-intensity Hydra Mulch, which helps keep the banks in place. We use something like that.
Can we put that in the study, and that would make them feel a little bit better? I don't know if you can do the 20 feet and just put that?
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna commit to the 20 feet without talking to the developer, but the Flex Terra is something we do on every set of projects we do in the parish, so I don't have a problem with that.
So if we can just say that, maybe that would make them feel better.
State your name, please.
Stacy Bavin.
And Sonia Hernandez. We live adjacent to the property. Our concerns are mostly on Stevens Road itself. The traffic study indicated that the existing right-of-way for Stevens Road was only 35 feet. We don't have much two-way traffic on there now, and, you know, we expect with additional homes, there will be more two-way traffic, and wondering if there would be any road widening or anything necessary on Stevens Road. We also have concerns about the heavy equipment accessing to build the subdivision and develop the property. We just noticed recently with the new pond development that it placed a lot of wear and tear on the road already. So, like I said, most of our concerns are with Stevens Road itself, and of course, with the drainage proposals.
They said that with the developing, when they have 17 lots, that meets the maximum you could have without having some kind of turning lane. So that means they're gonna max out the amount. They're gonna have 17 lots. And so if there are two cars per household there, increasing our traffic by, you know, 34 cars a day, there's not gonna be any kind of turning lane. You're turning from Highway 431, which is fairly dangerous to do if you are trying to go into a street that's 35-foot wide. And there's also an emergency fire station right there that would be blocked, the exit for that would be blocked if four cars were lined up waiting to get on 431. I mean, just a lot of logistics about the street itself is worries us.
And the other concern is on the map, and there were some questions in the traffic study about these additional lots and entrances to that. But that doesn't appear to be part of the Maple Grove. Just wondering about further development of those lots within this plan.
I guess the last thing is utilities. Nobody's mentioned how the utilities will be. Will there be, you know, the water lines, the gas lines, all of that? How would that affect our street? How would that be? Just things that we didn't understand.
Would the developer or staff care to comment?
I might add information as to the traffic. Stevens Road is a parish road, and so we're concerned like they are as to whether or not it would be tore up by construction vehicles. But we would require that the developer make repairs on that road if he tore it up. Otherwise, it's a parish road. As far as the traffic volume and the turning movement at 431, it's really a very small subdivision. It's big acreage, but it's only 17 houses. And so there's only about 20, I'm sorry, about a total of 200 cars a day in the peak hour. I'm sorry, and the average daily traffic would be no more than 200, which would be like 20 cars an hour in the worst hour. So it's really very, very light traffic. The intersection at 431 would be at a level of service A and B and the PM, so it's it's a it's not a traffic concern, really.
20 cars would take up the length?
You won't all go to work at one behind the other and all of that. 20, 17 lots is, I'm sorry, 17 lots is very, very small as far as the generation of traffic. I mean, most of us live on subdivisions that have 40 houses. And so it'd be twice as much, and we don't have a lot of traffic in our residential subdivisions.
It's 35-foot.
Well, it's okay for the road that exists. I mean, the road out there that exists does not need widened on a basis of this volume of traffic. So, sure, I'd like to say that the road would be widened, but really, it doesn't need to be based on this traffic volume.
Do you have any idea what on the map?
What's that?
Well, the traffic study had these lots questioning and
Well, that's a simple re, that's a simple subdivision that's already done. It's already existing lots. So even though we show it here, it's the same owner, but he actually, they had lots there, and it was just a reconfiguration of that.
It was recently purchased lot of this whole thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's not part of Maple Grove?
No, ma'am.
Any further comments? You had a question, ma'am? One second. You had a question, ma'am? Would you like to step up to the podium so we can? State your name, please.
Robin Beckett-Tee. Live across the poorly maintained canal for drainage. So we got notice for this meeting two days ago. And so you're saying that that subdivision right behind, which is where we live, has already been proposed, which we never received anything for that?
That was a simple resub with frontage already on Stevens Road. That's the final configuration of it. So that's a large lot.
So that's 18? So you're over your study?
Those lots existed, and we had frontage on Stevens Road. The person who owns that piece of property already had frontage. That's outside of this project altogether.
Does anyone else desire to speak?
When I come before y'all, oh, Mark Russell again. When I come before y'all to try to do a family petition or to do a subdivision, once I do that, it's, they bought three properties. And all of a sudden, they decided to leave one out and show you where these two are and divide it into 17. But they bought all three. But to get a 18th lot, they're lying to y'all. And that's what I see.
Any further comments? Public hearing, commissioners?
I I guess I don't understand that comment.
Derek, please correct me if I state this incorrectly. As the lots existed, there were two lots there. They reconfigured them so that they both have frontage still onto Stevens Road. So there were no lots created. They just reconfigured the two lots.
Yes.
No lots were created. They existed. Yes, that same developer bought them, but he didn't want to lump them into the subdivision. Because they already existed.
And that's to the east?
Yes, sir. Where that flag exists and then the thing next to it.
Okay, got it.
Derek, what, how do you access the Lot 7? Way down on the southwest end of the road? Is that gonna be the access? It's gonna be a limestone?
Yes, it's gonna be a private drive sitting over there.
Any further discussion? Public hearing, commissioners, staff?
I'm just gonna add, because the ladies did ask the question, there is not gonna be water run to these lots. They're gonna all be on individual wells. So I can't speak to Energy or Dimco or Atmos or Etel or Cox, but they will have no water. They will all be on wells, but they will be on sewer system.
Hey, Community.
Yes, sir.
Ricky, I have a question. You indicated, and I think this was in relation to the open ditch variance, that you're gonna make all all the lots or require that all the lots be at least one acre. I mean, I don't know what the measurements are of 14, 12, or I'd say 11, 12, 13, and 14. It seems like, especially with 12, the bulk of that lot is being eaten up by the lake. So if you is it meeting the intent of that requirement if it's an acre, including water, but it's less than an acre to build on?
The minimum lot size in this district with central sewers, like 6,000 square feet. He's got 1.59, 1.94, and 1.47. I mean, he's, these lots are so far above and beyond what the minimum is in this district to go to say that because they've got a lake on them, they don't count. Now, do I think that you could slide the southern line of 17 around and reduce some of that 1.49, and then move 16 and 15 and 14 and 13 and 12? Do I think you could get there? Yes. Do I think it's absolutely 100% necessary? No, I don't.
Well, of course, the waiver was granted because they were an acre. The waiver to not have sewers, I mean, curbs and gutters and so forth.
Yes, sir.
So it's an acre, but more than half of it is underwater.
Matt, I think the requirement you were referring to is deals with green space and parks.
Well, no, I think, I mean, I was understanding the the idea was to build a, build these estates, which is fine. I got no problem with that. And then, but to have the open, the only way to do it is to have the open gutter system as opposed to a culvert and whatnot. And so, Ricky, what you said is, well, the agreement that was struck or the consensus come to is make these lots all an acre. And you have, all of them are. I mean, all of them are bigger than an acre, except for 11, 12, 13, I don't know, 14. I mean, I'm not very good at math, so I didn't calculate it all out. But it looks, just looking at the picture, 12 especially, looks like three-quarters of it is, it's not an acre worth of developable developable land. And so I'm wondering what the, I'm trying to get to the rationale of, okay, well, we met the acre, but we really not developing this acre. We're developing on one-quarter of it, or one-third of it, or whatever it is.
Listen, it's different strokes for different folks. If this commission wants to say an acre of developable land, you guys can basically say, "We will approve the variance by the DPW Drainage and Planning Director to have that stipulation." And I will not lose a wink of sleep. My thought is that area where that house can be built on Lot 12 is probably still 22,000 square feet. How big of a house are you gonna build? I mean, it's a gigantic pad.
I mean, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I'm just trying to justify the variance for the open gutter being the estate-sized lots, but this, and this lot is, I guess, still bigger than what the parish requires, but it's not what the ordinance requires. But the ordinance also requires the curb and gutter and not the open the open sewer or drainage.
Yes.
I don't know if there is a requirement for this.
Ricky, the lot owner will actually own the lot under the lake.
Yeah, the lot owner will.
Because, right, in our subdivision, for instance, the lake is a detention pond, and we don't own the lake. The lake's owned by the HOA, by the subdivision. And in this case, the lot owner owns that lake and can do what they wanna do with it, except they can't impede the drainage, obviously. It still functions as a retention pond, I assume, which is why it's been enlarged to accommodate that. But the lot owner actually owns that. So that's part of the, it's part of the estate.
They'll be paying taxes on 1.94 acres.
Right, exactly. And that's less impervious area. I it's absolutely not, you know, it's not impervious because it's water or it's lake anyway, so I don't have a problem with it.
And this is a give and take, because, you know, alternative, like I said, is 45 acres. The alternative is, the developer go in, put a turn lane at Stevens Road and 431. And then we come in here, and we put in some 50s, 60s, and 70-foot lots. And that's not his intent. That's not what we wanna do. So on 45 acres, you could put in three units per acre. And so what we wanna do is, we wanna do these larger lots. And to do that, we wanna make more of a rural-type atmosphere for these larger lots, and that's the reason for the open ditch on the road. And keeping it private, so the parish never has to maintain this type of road. So that's the whole purpose of the subdivision.
All right, well, then my next question is, has drainage and traffic been reviewed by staff? Because our sheet says it's not been
Traffic.
Drainage impact study and traffic impact.
Traffic has been approved, drainage has not. We're working with them, and if you approve it, it would be contingent upon the drainage impact study.
And then Cody, I would ask her, I guess Ricky, this is a better question for you. Other than the other than the open sewer or the open drainage, it's legal otherwise?
Yes, sir.
So he could, if he wanted to, put in a curb and gutter and come back and double or quadruple the size of the subdivision?
It's more than that, but yes. The cost of doing that kind of a development grows exponentially because of the cost of the turn lanes onto Highway 431, which is why you're seeing this style of development. And I just wanna add, if me and my And I just wanna add, if me and my two brothers buy lots three, four and five, and in then three years decide to dig a, a three acre pond on our lots, we can do that.
I, I just point everybody to the ordinance. It's seventeen forty, forty-two. It just says, in determining the lot area, the area of the public street, servitude, roadway or driveway shall not be considered. Don't make any mention of a pond or dry land.
And there's no requirement that they, that they have the pond on their land. It was just part of the, uh, part of the give, the, the, the give to take the requirement of the curb and gutter away was, if you're gonna make an estate sized lot, make it an estate sized lot as opposed to having the open sewer and sixty lots in there. Correct?
Not open sewer, but open drainage.
Or open, open, open drainage and, I don't wanna say sewer, that's not the right word, but open drainage and sixty lots.
Look, I, I'll make one other comment. If all the major subdivisions we got were like this, I don't know who could afford the lots, but you wouldn't have the traffic and drainage problems, you know, you wouldn't, I mean, this, this presents almost no traffic or drainage issue. There, there's, there's very little of this property that's gonna actually be improved. It's not gonna be any different than it was before this was developed.
And there's no, no chance of coming in and resubdividing these by family petitions at that.
Not once you put that note on the plat, which they are, they've agreed to.
I would say I agree that your, your additional water that you're adding is, is very minimal because of the large lot size. I mean, it's, it's barely changing their study.
Any further comments, public hearing? Step up, state your name, please. Ma'am, please step up. He's been up here twice, please.
Okay, I'm a little late, but where on the map, can I see it? Where the pond is?
Your name, please, ma'am.
It's Monet Seay.
Thank you.
S.E.A.Y. Okay, where the pond is, is that gonna affect behind our property? Because the canal, the flow of it, because it's still flooded, it's like these two feet. It's with, with the public drainage canal that's connected behind my house, how would that affect with the pond that you putting that is already behind it? Like with the flooding, because it's already flooding, like the last little, you see where the pond ends? Would that affect my land just in case, because it does flood?
I can't comment. Our drainage requires that, that the water that's going there right now, based on the model, what's gonna happen after development will be less.
Okay, so it's, it's gonna minimal amount?
So that, and, and as big as this development is, because the house pads are gonna be so small, it should not make a big difference. They're having a huge pond right here. So.
I know, where the pond is, that's my property.
Right, I know that pond, the, the reason for that pond is to collect the water so that it's stored in the pond before it's put into that canal.
Okay, that's not, I, I, I'm understanding what you're saying, but just think logically, right now when it rains real hot, the water gets hot, it's hot. It, okay, everybody's house is kinda sitting on a hill, so some of that water is still coming up to the hill. So if you put the pond, which is like behind on my property line, that's more water that is already still generating high, it's gonna flood, it's, it's coming in to more, because that pond is already there and the water's already getting high, they're gonna collide together. So I'm wondering about the drainage, even though it's a city, public parish, you know, there is a canal that is for, for the public, you know, the city put it there, the drainage problem, that's the main thing I'm concerned about. Because it's already eroding, so we're already losing property. I don't need more property being lost because of that pond is on our property line. Connected to where the canal is, more water is gonna still.
I, I wanna be sure that we're clear, is that this development is not going to add any significant water additional to the channel. However, since you're, if you're having water problems now, this won't solve it. This won't turn the clock back. So essentially, what you're seeing now, you would see the same in the future.
No, because fourteen years ago, it took a four inch rain to get out of that ditch. Now it takes a two inch.
Well, it has nothing to do with this development, though.
No, I know that.
And I, I, I don't deny what you're saying, that, that over time drainage has significantly increased in, in their channels. However, this development is required to have a detention pond that mitigates any increase in water that they might have. And Rhonda's right. It's a very small amount for these large lots, very small amount of water. The roof of the house is all that is impervious. The rest of it's exactly like it was before. I think one of the commissioners said it's gonna look an awful lot like what it looks like now. But the, what I wanted you to be sure you understood is that if you're having water problems now, you'll have the same water problems in the future. This won't, this won't correct those.
How much rain does a full pond hold?
I think what we all have to understand, that any project that comes before this commission, our concern is the project, whether it's family petition, subdivision, what have you, doesn't exacerbate or worsen the condition already existing. So if it was a bad situation before the project, our biggest concern is, does it make it worse? Now, there are times when some want to make the project, make it better. I'm not certain we're in a position to, to say you must do that. It's nice when the developer, landowner is willing to mitigate and meet you halfway, but I don't think this commission has the authority to mandate you must make the situation better than before your project. Our primary concern is, does it worsen the circumstances? And what appears that staff, the developer is saying, nothing about this project is gonna make anything worse than it already is. Is that correct? That being said, I'm going to assume.
Can I answer his question? He asked how much water the pond can hold.
How much rain can a full pond hold?
Full pond. It was a sarcastic question.
I didn't want you to answer question wrong.
The pond should be constructed to hold a twenty-five year storm and contain, all the water should be directed there, even for a hundred year storm. It won't hold a hundred year. It's gonna come out of the outlet. There's an emergency control weir and there will be erosion control. So any erosion that's going on in that ditch, at least from this pond, they should be taking care of it. It's gonna help, at least at that point.
And nothing's holding a twenty-five year rain today.
No.
So that's a benefit.
I'd like to just mention one thing. Talking about, uh, water coming out of the banks of, of the ditch and that kinda, that kinda thing, we agree. Uh, the hundred year base flood out here is thirteen. Uh, at the back of these properties, we're looking at elevations of eight and six. So yes, it's low. And that's the whole purpose of trying to develop it this way in order to minimize, you know, any fill, any type of, of improvements we're gonna do on this property. So we're trying to minimize any effects.
I wanna, I'd like to say, I mean, it looks on this, on this issue, I mean, I, I value the opinion of the, the neighboring landowners and I think they have valid concerns. I think if somebody was building next to my property, I wanna know if my property is gonna be flooded out, what the traffic impact is going to be. Uh, that's why the law is crafted the way it is, to, to study this and to make sure that these new subdivisions meet the requirements. I think our duty is to make sure that it meets the requirements and meets the, the code. And once we reach that level, um, there's not much we can do about it otherwise. I think we're bound by the law. We don't draft the law. We're not certainly the legislature. Uh, we're appointed by the legislature to make sure that all these new subdivisions that are coming meet the codes that are in place and the procedures that are in place. So while I value all of, all of what I heard tonight, and Mark, I've known you for a long time, it looks like this actually is more, a lot better than some of the things we've seen, where you have a subdivision being built off a small road with many, many lots. And people come in and say, well, there's a hundred new lots coming in the land that was never developed before. This is gonna be seventeen new lots, bigger lots, bigger houses, um, and likely better drainage, you know, minimal on traffic. So, um, meeting the code, I don't think we have much option but to go ahead and prove this as it is presented to us, subject to it passing through Rhonda and drainage.
Can I just ask a couple of quick questions, if he might? Did the developers say?
Step up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Did the developers say the square footage of the homes he plans to build there, do you know?
No, ma'am.
You don't know that? And so if the, when they do the dirt work, they're just gonna elevate where the slats are gonna be? Okay, and, and they have to get it to the flood, like I pay flood insurance. Are they gonna have flood insurance or how they can get it to that elevation or?
Obviously, they have the option of either bringing in a dirt pad up to the base flood elevation or putting it on piers. Either way.
And you don't know what the square, minimum square footage would be or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Are you asking if it's gonna be a trailer park?
Yeah.
It's not being presented as under the, uh.
It's not the proposal.
It's not the proposal, so.
The parish doesn't control the type of structure that's placed on a legally created lot.
The point is, that's not part of the proposal now, so.
Doesn't have to be.
We can't control that anyway.
That'd be some expensive truck.
No further discussion from staff, commissioners? No further comments? Public hearing, at this time, we close the floor for public hearing. That being said, I need a motion.
I move to approve the request.
Is it in motion?
Contingent upon drainage, please.
With the stipulation that the, sorry, Rhonda, forgot that. That the drainage study is, is, uh, accepted, adequate and accepted. Or whatever.
In motion to approve with, with contingencies? Can I get a second, please? A second. Is the motion a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, don't come back tonight, okay?
Item eleven A, ordinance SR fifteen zero eight, section seventeen four zero five.
All right, we brought this up last month. Um, I'm gonna give a second for everybody to leave, because it's. Okay, so this item for consideration is a revision to the subdivision regulations in the Unified Land Development Code. The purpose of this section is to set the rules and requirements for the submission of preliminary plats. Uh, on the deadline for the November meeting, the planning department received four complete packages for four new major subdivisions that will be scheduled to appear before the commission, uh, this month. This amount of information is quite large and with all the other duties and responsibilities of the persons responsible for reviewing the documents, there is a fear that something may be missed. The review may be inadequate or simply incomplete. So what we did is we revised the code, uh, to extend the deadline. And what's, before you says seventy days, we were informed by legal counsel that the longest that we can extend it is to sixty days, because if somebody submits something and the public hearing is on day sixty-one, it has already been automatically approved. So we would like to revise that to be sixty days prior to the hearing. And then on the second page, um, the, the full ordinance reads, um, ten full scale prints, one eleven by seventeen, reduced print of the preliminary plat, one eleven by seventeen, reduced print of the preliminary plat submitted in electronic form or other acceptable format is approved by the Parish of Ascension. Technology Department and specified supplementary material shall be submitted to the Secretary for the Planning and Zoning Commission. At least, we're gonna change that to sixty days prior to a regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting. The Engineering Review Agency and the Department of Public Works shall review the preliminary plat within. And what's currently highlighted says twenty-one days. I wanted to get engineering's input to see if that's, uh, if that's okay. Review and inspection fees established by the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be submitted with the preliminary plat. So the only two things changing today are the, the days, and it went from, I believe, forty-five to sixty. And the time that they have to review, it went from seven to, or from fourteen to twenty-one. So that's basically what we're doing, is trying to give more time to review what's submitted to us.
Last time we set this for a public hearing.
Yes, sir. So this is the explanation part. We can have questions, then we can open the floor for public hearing. I'm sure there's gonna be a couple of people who wanna comment, and then we can decide if we wanna move it forward or continue just to think about it.
I like it. Any comments from commissioners?
Well, we either do this or we have, hire more staff, so what's the more likely thing to happen? Rhonda, is this gonna work for you?
I need more staff.
Need more staff anyway.
This'll, this'll, this will, may help. Um, there's no limit on how many I get. I mean, he's talking about we got four in. I think we've got five or six for next, and, and then we just push one off. So, um, without some assistance and, and maybe not necessarily staff, but contract, um, it's hard to keep up and make sure that we get good quality, no pun intended.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. I think as a commission, because it's our responsibility to review these things and we depend upon your ability to, to do this, we should as a commission make some recommendation to the council with regard to that. This is one part of a solution. But there should be, there should be some contingency to allow you to maybe some, uh, uh, firm on, uh, on retainer or, or with an IDIQ contract, where you could assign some work to someone when you're just overburdened.
We're working on that. It makes a lot more sense because this, this isn't consistent. It comes in waves. So it would make a lot more sense to have someone to help with that.
Yeah, you just have as needed, someone who's pre-approved, who you could assign something to, give them a deadline and get it back when you're just overburdened. So you say you're working on that, so who's working it?
My boss is trying to get that approval, but, you know, with political changes right now, it's hard to get. You know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next few months.
Maybe we can recommend.
I'd really appreciate that.
No further comments from commissioners. This time we open the floor, this time we open the floor for public hearing.
Derek Murphy.
Is he back? You've got a lot of guts, Derek.
I just wanted to make a couple of statements. One is, Gasper said it really well. Um, you know, these do come in waves. Uh, sometimes you have one submittal, sometimes you, lately, we, I don't know, she's been having more than one. Uh, earlier this year, administration, we, you know, had the fees doubled, the council doubled the fees, trying to, to get help, get more staff, get contracts, stuff like that. So the fees are doubled from what they were, uh, this time. So, uh, from our standpoint, we'd just like to see, um, maybe get some more help instead of stretching these out. We do feel that getting comments back, um, earlier would help, not have so many contingencies upon approvals. And we do feel that, you know, if you do have one, Rhonda has a lot of duties. And so if you do have one, she can do that. If not, she can tap into additional help. So that's just my comments on that. I just wanted to give my two cents.
I think the, the ordinance, um, would allow extending the time, but it doesn't require extending the time. So if you had it, if you had help, we could still meet the current deadlines, but I don't see any problem with going forward with this. I, I think this is a good idea anyway, give you a little more latitude. But, uh, I think we should, not as part of this motion, but later, uh, make a motion that we, that we recommend that, uh, there be some, some other contingency plan, some, uh, firm on retainer or firms, pre-approved firms on retainer to help you. But I, I still think this is a good change, though.
I agree. Public hearings still open. Any further comments? That being said, this time we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is the motion to accept?
A second.
Is the motion accepted? All in favor of the motion?
Aye. That's what the corrections that Ricky mentioned. Okay.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Item eleven B, section seventeen five zero one three.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Derek.
This revision proposes to amend the drainage regulations to require the design engineer for all projects to submit a letter of certification stating that the project was completed in accordance with the plans that were submitted, reviewed and approved by the Parish of Ascension. This letter will be signed and sealed by the design engineer and no project shall receive its final approval until it has been received. So what we're attempting to do here is to, once again, help. So what we're attempting to do here is to, once again, help out the engineering department, because as it currently works today, when a project's done, they've got to go out and review it. They've got to pull out the construction drawings, they've got to check to see if things were constructed according to the plan. If we get a letter certifying it was, it was done, if there's ever an issue, we can go after that guy, we can go after his insurance, we can go after whatever we need to go after, because he certified via this letter that it was completed. And so, the code amendment is in section seventeen five zero one three, design criteria. We've added section D, which reads, upon completion of the project, the design engineer for the project is required to submit a signed and sealed letter of certification that states that the project was completed in accordance with the construction plans that were submitted, reviewed and approved by the Parish of Ascension. Final approval will not be granted until this letter has been received.
And Ricky, if that design engineer is a professional engineer that puts his or her stamp at risk, is that?
That would be my understanding of doing that, because all too often, what we see is a project gets uh, reviewed and approved by the engineers, and when we go out to do the final approval, things are constructed vastly different or not constructed at all. And if we had received a letter to that effect, and then there's a drainage problem later, we go out and look and nothing's constructed, yeah, we're going after them.
Can I speak? This, this very issue came up today. Bob and I went out for an inspection, my boots are dirty, I can prove I did some work today. But we went out and the pond was beautiful, but the guy unknowingly said, yeah, we had a big storm the other day and there's no water in there. Well, that's because their drainage pipe was much bigger than what was in the plan. If, and, and truthfully, even if we go out there and inspect it, and it's correct as on the plan, as soon as we leave, there's no guarantee that it's not going to change. But if somebody puts their stamp on it and says, hey, this is built the way it's supposed to be, if we come up and see drainage problems later and we see something different, then we have a, a place to go. There, there's some uh, responsibility besides us.
Comments from commissioners, any further? This time we open, this time we open the floor for public hearing. At this time, we also close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there motion?
I'll second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Item C, ordinance SR fifteen ten, section seventeen four zero two eight.
This last item came at the request of our legal counsel. Um, the revision proposes to amend the subdivision regulations to allow for the extension of the deadline to have a family partition finalized. Recently, we've had an issue where a property owner received the approval from the commission to do the family partition. However, the one hundred and eighty day time limit lapsed before they had completed the required action to finalize the petition. This revision provides for the opportunity to extend the deadline by an additional ninety days. So if you can look at your uh, document, what's highlighted is what's being proposed to be added to the code. So in section F, it reads, uh, the addition, however, uh, oh, I'm sorry. This recordation must be done within one hundred and eighty days of approval by the planning commission. And what's added is, however, prior to the expiration of the one hundred and eighty days, the applicant for good cause may request a ninety day extension to complete the transfer. Said request for extension must be made at a meeting of the planning commission prior to the expiration of the initial one hundred and eighty day term described above. Good cause shall be determined by the members of planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting of the commission. Further, when the property be subdivided, requires the completion of succession proceedings prior to transfer of the property. The one hundred and eighty day delay shall not begin to run until the date of filing of the judgment of possession into the public records of the parish.
Comments from commissioners, staff, commissioners?
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Any further from staff? This time we open the floor for public hearing. That being said, this time we close the floor for public hearing, can I get a motion?
I'll so move, if we approve, recommend approval.
Is there motion, is there motion and second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Staff report.
I'm good.
I'm sorry I didn't get to it today. I didn't print it out, I was in a meeting on one of these right beforehand.
You need, you need help, in other words, Rhonda, right?
I apologize.
No staff, engineering staff report?
I have, I have a couple of things, since this meeting is so short, I wanted to add a couple of motions.
Stretch it out.
Anyway, I want to move that this commission recommend to the parish administration that pre-approved engineering firms be made available to the parish engineer to assist as needed with the review of studies so as to assist this commission with its responsibilities. That was in connection with the discussion that we just had with Rhonda. I, I think they're heading in that direction, but I think it would, it would help if this commission um, uh, made it clear that for us to do our duties, it would help us if Rhonda were able to do hers.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Is there motion, is there second?
I'll give you the wording of that.
Is there motion and second? I don't see legalists telling us we can't do this.
Well, the, the only thing I'm thinking is, it would, it would have to be a proposed ordinance that would have to come back for public hearing, and you can recommend it to the council. I mean, if you just send it as a, as a rec, a recommendation, but it won't have any legal effect unless we go the other way with it.
Well, no, I'm not asking for legal, I'm just asking, I'm making a recommendation from this commission.
Okay. That they put it in the budget.
It's just a recommendation.
Okay, that's fine, we can move forward with that.
The parish has to, has to deal with, we don't have anything to do with hiring people for the administration, so we just want to, I just want to strengthen what I think Rhonda's boss is trying to do now, uh, and to, with, with a word from our, from this commission that it would help us, that's all. Is that okay?
That's fine, just vote on it.
The other thing I want to um, mention.
Wait, we have to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, is there motion and second? Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Fisi's motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. One other thing, um, because there's a perception that there's a traffic, that when a traffic engineering firm working directly for the developer might be influenced by the developer, I don't believe that's the case, by the way, but that is a perception. I want to move that we conduct a public hearing at the next meeting, uh, to, and propose that, that the parish, using pre-approved in, uh, traffic engineering firms, conduct traffic studies requi, as required in connection with proposed developments, uh, with such studies to be paid for by the developer. And that, that is simply because, that is something I discussed with Ricky, I think it can be done. I don't, I do, I really do believe the studies that are being done by, by traffic engineers for the developers are, are fine. I, I suspect strongly that the same firms would wind up doing the work for, directly for the parish. I'm not, and I don't want this to be a burden on, on the parish any further, but I think that um, with the developer paying for the, the study and the study being, being conducted by the parish, it would remove that perception that there's a problem with that.
Uh, for clarification, is this comparable to an impact fee?
No.
I mean, that would have to be defined.
No, 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 the, the.
Are you asking me or him?
The, the uh, the developer's already required to do traffic studies.
Yeah, but who's, I think the burden now is on the develop, developer to pay for that.
It is, and I'm still saying the burden would still be on the developer to pay for it.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm asking for a public hearing. I'm suggesting that we do a public hearing, that's what the motion is.
If I could mention, we have something similar with, it, it's not really a third party, but the developer right now pays for testing labs where they pay it, so you have to consider if the testing lab is being paid for data. You know, you have to consider if it's third party. It would be a lot better if the payment was made to us and then we retained the.
That's my, that's my proposal.
I've, I've seen that before, it's, it, it does try to take a little bit of a burden away from the people being contracted to do the work to their, their not being, it doesn't look like they're being paid to give the answer that the developer wants. I don't know how to fix that, and I don't know what our ordinance is saying, but it's not just traffic.
Given what Rhonda just said, should, would you consider changing your motion to include all third party?
Well, we, I don't think we could do drainage studies that way, that's a lot more complicated. I had that discussion before, but I think we could do traffic and, what else, Rhonda? Testing labs?
Testing labs.
Just those two things?
And we already have that instrument for testing, yes.
Then I would, then I would sugge, oh, we don't, no, we're not doing that with testing labs. Now you're suggesting that it's the same sort of situation, right?
Yes.
So I, I would change my motion then to include testing labs in that, in that motion.
I'll second.
Is there motion and second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes unanimously.
We're going to set a proposed ordinance instead of a public hearing next month?
That's the plan.
That's the recommendation?
What, Ricky?
There's no further, um, staff? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll move. Second.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, so zoning in five minutes or ten minutes?